Good evening and welcome. We're going to approve the agenda. We have an amended agenda. If we could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, it's, we're amending it to add a moment of silence.
So moved.
Second.
There a second? All in favor? Okay. Penfield Schools community is mourning the tragic loss of an 11th grade Penfield High School student on Tuesday, January 12th. At this time, we are respecting the family's privacy and not releasing the student's name. However, our thoughts and prayers are with the family at this difficult time, and if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. If I could have a motion a second that the consent agenda be approved.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Thank you. We have a special report, introduction of a textbook. Director Punnam?
Sure. We'll ask, I have Anne Punzie and Luke Lorenzo from the art department here to speak on behalf of the textbooks. Yeah, come on up. Wave to the camera. So Luke and Anne are outstanding art teachers from the high school and with an incredible book that we looked at. A couple of, when it first went on display, and we had a lot of people stop in and take a look because of the amazing artwork. But I'll turn it over to you.
Well, Luke and I have been working on introducing this AP Art History course, which is gonna start September of next year. And we were, we both took AP workshops this summer, and part of that was really researching textbooks. Actually, Luke did his in the fall, and I did mine in the summer. And this one was the one that we had decided would be the best for our students. There were two really that were the finalists. One was, that we're gonna be using as a secondary text, which is "The Gardeners Are Through the Ages." And that one, we liked as well, but it just, from teachers that we had worked with, they liked it, but they, ones that had already been running the course have said that some of the language was a little bit, a little bit too much for high school students, and that this text had the content that was rich that we needed, but was a little bit more age-appropriate for high school students. So that was the deciding factor for us. And there you have it. You know, the quote came in. You know, they both have digital versions online that are accessible to students, so what Luke and I had decided was, in order to save costs, as well as students having to lug this heavy book around, that we would keep this, you know, just one set of books. And, and then the digital access would be for anywhere in the building, really. If they're in the library, or the academic sports center, or accessing at home. But we have extra in case some students can't access it online at home. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Board members, any questions?
Luke has anything to add from that?
No, I don't really have. Thank you.
Okay. Camille?
Not related totally to the textbook, but do you know yet how many students are interested in taking the course? Will you have a section, or two sections? Do you, is that too soon to know?
You know, I've been sort of trying patiently to not be at Stephanie Dana's door to ask her that very same question. You know, Luke and I have both had numerous students come up to us in the halls and say that they're really excited about the class, and that they're signed up for it, and they have, you know, a bunch of, you know, people that they know in their social group that have signed up for it. So, we have no idea. I really think we'll have one class. The question is whether or not we'll have two sections. Luke and I will be working on it together either way. We've been sort of spearheading it from the start. I don't think we'll stop at this point. It's, it's a lot of work, and a lot of material to cover, so I think especially for the first year, regardless of whether there's one or two sections. But I, and we're hoping for two. We'll see what happens.
That'd be great. It's exciting.
Carol, go ahead.
So if I understand correctly, then you're only gonna have two copies of the book?
Oh, no. We're, we're, we put in for the budget for 30. So that there would be enough for every student in the class, as well as a few extra for any students that don't have digital access at home.
Okay, I guess that clarifies it. From me, I was just wondering if there was going to be digital access, or rent a book?
No, we would, but the nice thing is, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to have kids taking them back and forth from home, which will save their backs, as well as wear and tear on the book, because they could get pretty beat up. It's expensive book.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I know a couple of us were interested in going to that class, when we were talking about the book and everything, but...
Well, we'll let you know when it's running, in case you could sneak out for lunch at all.
Yeah, if we could audit, we'd love to do that. Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming and letting us know. We're, I'm sure it'll be a great opportunity for the students. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And on a other note, just a plug for the portfolio reception, which is going to be Wednesday, and the students have been working really hard. So, I know you guys are always great at turning out, and it's such a nice addition to the night, so just thought it's...
What, just remind us in the community...
Five to seven. They could send out the invitation again, if that, if that's easier.
They have it. But I guess in terms of anybody else watching, I'm thinking it's the portfolio five.
Five to seven, Wednesday. There will be snacks.
Well, I think also for the public that's watching, I mean, it's a great opportunity, because you have the students, you know, with their pieces of art, and you have the chance to walk around. And if you, if you haven't done it, which most of the board members have, but it's a great opportunity. So, thanks for doing that.
Oh, thank you. I tell them it's the only public aspect of the art-making process. Everything else happens behind closed doors, so it's, it's a good, a good experience for them to be able to talk about their work, and, and have that experience of sharing it. So, thank you.
We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this is our visitor speaking time, and time is always provided on our agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. We have a process in place, a request-to-speak form, that is always available when you come into the meeting. And we do have a request tonight from someone who's been in front of us many times before. Let's welcome Krista Nack, on behalf of SEPTA. Welcome.
Welcome. And each year, I tell myself, I'm gonna do this earlier, but somehow January comes, and we get to the end, and I realize I haven't got the donation part yet. So, take a look at some of these books. These are actually earmarked for Indian Landing.
And this is a sampling of the books from the, as a result of the SEPTA Book Fair. For those that are watching or streaming online with us. And Krista's passing those around as she usually does, because it comes up with some great opportunities and great books, so...
So, yeah, our book fair update. So this year, we were able to purchase 66 books for all of the school libraries. So what I've shared tonight are what's dedicated and going to Scribner. And I just wanted to, again, thank Webster, Barnes &amp; Noble for hosting us again, and for being, they always add extra staff on the day that we're gonna be there, because they are confident that we're gonna bring in a big crowd, which we did again this year, and thanks to everybody that came out. So this year, we kinda had a little bit of an upset. Indian Landing is our winner this year, as far as the book fair contests. So Harris Hill, I think, is up on maybe six years in a row. So thanks to Mr. Seaman bringing the Indian Landing singers, it kind of upped Indian Landing's participation numbers. So that was the big upset this year. So I just wanted to send a thank you to all the staff who participated this year, all of the students that maybe created a poster for the poster contest. The posters were beautiful this year. Thank you to all of the musical groups that performed. Thanks to everybody who came out and shocked, and supported SEPTA Book Fair. And thanks to some of our community partners, Music Education Center right in Penfield. Jumbo Shrimp came and played. We had Erin Volvo from Upstate Music Therapy. We had three, six, nine teams of pet therapy pets and, and handlers. Children's author Jim Westcott, and we also had author Scott Betoniac, along with two Lego master builders. So we were, on behalf of SEPTA, I'm proud to be able to donate these books to the Penfield Central School Libraries.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate efforts that, that you put out there, and it's always been a great, great book fair. Board members, any questions?
I forgot one thank you.
Okay.
No I in team unless you spell it wrong. So again, a great team on, on the SEPTA side to pull this all together. Each person, you know, took a section or a part, and we were able to put it all together. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that.
Okay, thanks. And thanks for coming.
Yep. And Camille?
I get to take all the books home, because I live across the... I don't know why I read that. I have to read them all.
Here, I'll leave the bag with you.
So it's likely you'll see these back in a month. It'll take a while to read them. And I don't, you know, just a comment, I think, there's a lot of school districts out there that I've learned in my line of work, that don't even have SEPTA programs. And I, I don't think everybody realizes how fortunate we are to have a strong SEPTA Special Ed PTA, and the things that they do, and, you know, obviously, the Penfield does a great job on that, so I think it's important to mention. Thank you. Aubrey Masters, our student representative, would you like to give us an update?
Sure. So currently, we're in the midst of midterm week, so that means that this Thursday, we're officially halfway through the school year. Events coming up, the PGSA is having a fantastic fine sale Wednesday through Saturday. And then, I know Dr. Maloney will like me mentioning, mentioning this, but News 10 NBC is having a challenge where he, Justin Granite from it is gonna challenge our varsity basketball team to a three-point challenge. And it's the online, well, we're, we're not, like, chosen yet. There's an online poll between us, Rush Henrietta, and Mercy. So, and I just voted online before I came here today, but... And then, as a prelude to the Blue Ribbon Week, which is coming up Saturday, the 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00, is the District Ride Mac and Cheese Contest, and it's $20 to enter, and the proceeds will go to the Blue Ribbon Week fundraiser. And then, so, Blue Ribbon Week is promoting kindness for everyone, and the five dress-up days are positive in pajamas, happy in hats, supportive in stripes, trust in your team, and believe in blue. And throughout that whole week, there'll be $3 blue wristbands that you can buy to help raise funds. And then lastly, in sports, we had two big wins over the weekend for basketball. Girls won 54 to 44 versus Elmira, and boys were close, 58 to 55, and beat Webster Thomas.
Okay. And some of you may or may not follow this, but I followed the basketball. If you go on a New York State Sports Writers Association poll, our girls are ranked ninth in the state, in girls' basketball. And the boys' varsity basketball's honorable mention, which is probably a first in New York State, so I think that's great. Do you have any midterms that you have to study for now, or?
I had AP Lit yesterday, and I have AP Environmental tomorrow.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Are we eating mac and cheese, or?
I think it's like a judge, I don't know who's judging it. I guess you could go and see if you could have...
A couple of judges.
We have a couple judges, yes.
What are they doing? They're cooking it?
So it's, yes. Is that the Penfield Community Center? It's run through, Sue Coomer actually helped run, run it through, make sure it fits all of our board policies and everything else. But it's $20, if you bring your favorite prized mac and cheese recipe, you pay $20 to enter it into the contest. It'll be judged by some relatively famous people, Dr. Sansucci, Barb Baviars, and I'm sure a host of, of others, local, local celebrities. And it'll be the Saturday, the Saturday, or Saturday, February 6th, which is the weekend before Blue Ribbon. And it's tied, because the proceeds to that will go to the organization, anti-bullying organization that Blue Ribbon is donating to.
So that'll be Saturday, February 6th, at 2:00 PM, at the Community Center. So thanks for bringing that up, and we'll look forward to hearing from our judges. Hopefully, they won't be contacted by any of the cooks ahead of time, so... Okay, now we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
So we'll start with student and staff honors. And I have a great news. We've talked about that, we've talked a little bit about PTA already, and the PTA Reflections Contest, which is a national contest. We have increased our numbers every year, and the, we have students, artwork was selected to move on to the Genesee Valley PTA regional level of the annual reflections competition. I've done one report on this for those students heading there. And after this, whoever moves on goes to the state level. But I won't go through everybody, but just Bay Trail has three students, Cobble says seven, and the high school has 10 students. And this really is, we just saw two of our wonderful art teachers here that really focus in that. They work closely with the PTA around reflections, and the art teachers do a lot of this work. So I can tell you that at Cobble's, at the elementary level, it really is all done outside of class. They have an opportunity to sort of stay after if they want to work on that. So, again, thanks not only to the students, but when you talk about an elementary level, thank you to the parents who, who made sure they could find time to come and pick up their children and participate. But you take a look through that, and we've got those names up on the webpage as well. And we'll keep you in the loop, because I'm sure with our talent, we'll have some students moving on. So we have a Lego movie, which I think we're gonna show a clip for. All right, hang on one second. We'll talk about it first, but it's a congratulations to PHS senior, wait, PHS senior Mike Alchen, who created a Lego movie version of the trailer for the upcoming Captain America movie, which, wait, was featured by, featured by Entertainment Weekly on its website, and Twitter page, as well as Channel 8 News, and what's not up there, but I did see, was also was forwarded out by Robert Downey Jr., Iron Man himself tweeted it out as well. So a lot of great, a lot of great press from one of our own high school kids. And now, we're gonna play a little clip, and then we'll come back to it. Oh, Mike, I didn't, I, but thank you so much. So actually, Mike, we, the board, we see Mike.
Stand up, Mike. Stand up. Come on, stand up.
And Mike's mom and dad as well.
Oh, very welcome. Thank you for coming, mom and dad.
Mike, yeah, can we actually, we'll keep you there. We'll play some, and then we'll, we'll talk to you. So the whole, the whole video is about two minutes long, the whole trailer?
Yeah, it's about two minutes long.
So, and, and I think we've posted that too, so make sure people go and take a look at it. But if you could share a little bit about how, you know, how you came about that, what sort of skills you used. I just think it's amazing, and the fact that somebody in our school is getting sort of real national attention for something good is wonderful.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. So pretty much, I've, I've just been like into Legos my whole life. And one day, I just decided to start making videos. I've seen like other things on YouTube, so I just, I got like a camera and started, you know, just making it move, frame by frame, and it just all came together smoothly. And as the years progressed, I just kept going on with it. Like, I used programs, like Sony Vegas, After Effects, just a bunch of random programs. I just mashed it all together, and had explosions, I had the mouths, just a bunch of fun stuff to see.
That's great.
And you did have on YouTube, how many views, was it YouTube?
Yeah. Um, I actually, I made another trailer back in, back like last year, and it's up to like a million views as of now. And this one's rocketing up there right now. It's about at 200,000 or so.
That's incredible. Great. Do you have a question, Catherine?
How long did it take for you to do the two-minute trailer?
That took me approximately a month and four days. I just clocked it out the other day.
And so, how long, for you, when you're sitting there doing it, how long can you stand to sit there and do it? And, I mean, a four-hour chunk, a two-hour chunk, or?
Well, I mean, I just did it when I was free, really, like, usually on school days, I would just do it for like an hour or so. Weekends, I would try to sit through, get it done, get as much done as I could. It was just, it just varied every day. I didn't have like a, like a schedule. I just did it in my free time, really.
Nice. Very impressive.
Thank you.
When you were filming, did you follow a sequence? So what we saw made there was a sequence, or?
Yeah, actually, um, there's another video where it's like a side-by-side comparison with the actual trailer and my trailer. So I, so I could like see the comparison. I really just went through every frame and tried to like recreate it. And so it would just match up on, at the, at the exact time.
What are you, what are you doing next year, Mike?
Um, something related to film.
And, and who do you have here with you? I know there's, because we don't usually get such a big crowd, so at least a couple of these people are with you, so...
Yeah. My parents are here, for a start.
So round, round of applause for parents, too. And your, and your principal's here, too.
Yeah, Dr. Maloney is here. I know she's excited about this.
Can tell.
I'm superhero at home.
Yeah, she tells me all about it.
That's great.
Okay. Well, thank you again. This is great, and we're very proud to have you here at Penfield High School.
Thank you for having me.
Now, Mike, get back to work.
I will.
For, for those people who didn't tell, who are watching us home, is Mike is one of our great student cameramen behind the camera. So, he does great work, and I'm gonna have to talk to you, because maybe you could do something like that with all the board clips you have. I think... That'll be the most boring Lego movie ever.
Well, not necessarily. Speak for yourself when it comes to...
I don't know. These, those are a little more action than, than up here, but... So, Mike, thank you. And then, moving on, some, some other great students. Model UN, congratulations to PHS students Katie Claybor and Joy Zhang, who are being named outstanding delegates at the annual Model UN Conference in Syracuse. And this Model UN club has continued to build and pick up steam at the high school level, and it's great to see the recognition our students are getting. Science award, PHS senior Alan Liu has been selected as a 2016 Intel Science Talent Search finalist, based on his work with Professor Alex Losfitch from the University of Rochester. He'll receive a $1,000 award, as well as an additional $1,000 grant for Penfield High School. Alan's research with Professor Losfitch resulted in a paper that has been submitted to a professional journal for publication. So just congratulations to Alan. Wonderful. We have our Rotary Oratorical Contest that we do every year in conjunction with the Rotary, and 14 Penfield juniors participated in the 2016 Rotary Contest at Penfield High School. Each student wrote and presented a speech on the importance of ethics in the life I plan to live. And congratulations to Karina Fess, Gabby Panko, Bronwyn Pelish, and Matthew Thurston, who were selected to present their speeches at the Penfield Rotary Luncheon. And then special congratulations to Gabby and Bronwyn, who were selected to represent the Penfield Rotary at the next level of the speech contest. And I do have to give kudos to Dr. Maloney in the English Department, and the speech teachers, or public speaking teachers, because there wasn't that long ago where the Rotary would come, really begging us for people to participate. This is an annual Rotary Contest that happens throughout the state. It starts here in Monroe County for us, and there were years where we had one or two students. And so they were the ones who went on, and to start now to have 14, that had to get whittled down to four, to whittle down to two, really says a lot about that program and our, our partnership with Rotary, and how much that means to us. So, great work for those students. Achievement awards. Three of our own board members here have been recognized by the New York State School Boards Association School Board U Recognition Program. Board members qualify for points by participating in New York State School Board Association Developmental Activities. Lisa Binadi-Chidzi and Mark Elidge have received the Board Achievement Award for earning at least 75 points, and Catherine Dean has received the Board Excellence Award for earning at least 150 points. So congratulations to the board, and I'll hand out your... And last for, for my segment here, is we have a donation. The Penfield Sports Boosters have donated a 2004 Polaris 600 Touring snowmobile to the sports department, our athletic department. It will be used to pull the trail groomer for the Nordic Ski Program and PE classes. The athletic department welcomes this gift and expresses its appreciation. We have never had one of these before. It will help the program greatly in regards to before the trail groomer was either not done or pulled by humans. And the, and the snowmobile will be helpful. We actually join many of the local districts around us who have used this equipment to do the very same thing. So it will be helpful for our athletic department. And I will turn it over to Dr. S...
Catherine had a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's, it's a comment. I wanted to just step back for a minute about the Oratorical Contest at Rotary, because I was at that meeting, and I saw the students doing their speeches, and they were just fantastic. They really, really were. And Gabby and Bronwyn, the ones that went on, I am just so glad I wasn't a judge, because that would, you know, it was really hard to, to discern who really was deserving of. But they were wonderful, and you could tell they put a lot of time and effort. They all perform, or, they all spoke from memory. They didn't use notes, and it was really very impressive. So I just wanted to give a kudos to the kids there. That was wonderful.
Great, thank you.
And I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci, well, for the 2016-17 budget.
I have a couple of things to bring, to present tonight. I need to, we'll be doing our budget for special programs, an update on the tax cap, and I'll also include a update on, on new development in Penfield. So, with regard to the budget, tonight is our conversation around special area programs. We always begin our budget conversations just with a look back at our board goals. Those goals of student achievement and excellence, partnership, and fiscal responsibility. Spend a lot of time talking about this. I know I always include it, and I think it gets repetitive for the board. And while I apologize for that, I do think it's important that we, that we reflect on that, and that we recognize that that's what this is all about, that we're looking at those goals that both lead us and guide us as we go throughout this process. We, it is a process, and we're on our way. So we began in November. We've worked through the items that you see in yellow. So, the budget calendar, goals, assumptions, guidelines. We've had presentations on the building condition survey. We've done, we've reviewed the administrative budget. And tonight, we are, and the administrate, I'm sorry, we've reviewed the administrative budget. And tonight, we are looking at the special area, the special, we call it Program One. It's the first program presentation of the budget, but really, it's those special area classrooms. So staff development, special education, school counselors, nurses, school psychologists, and school social workers. In all, that composes 12% of the overall budget. We'll continue to do presentations... We'll continue to do presentations throughout March and April, um, as we work up to an entire budget adoption on, on April nineteenth. This is a little bit different look at that, you can see, um, the relative proportions of the various components in the way that we present our budget. So, um, again, tonight's presentation is about twelve percent overall. That, eh, that portion of the budget is going to go up by seven tenths of one percent, that's an eighty-one thousand dollar increase. Overall, it's an eleven million, four hundred thousand dollar budget, so, um, that's a very modest increase compared to what it's been in several years. And you can see why in this slide, this is the, that budget split up by the various components of the budget. Um, so staff development you can see is a relative, and social work, um, are relatively smaller portions of it. Uh, health services, school, uh, psychologists still a little larger, but still small. Um, and clearly the, you know, the majority of this budget, the vast majority of this budget is for services for students with disabilities. And you can see, um, really not a lot of change year over year in any of those proposals. Um, we had, we did a major revamping of the way special education programs are offered in the district a number of years ago. Um, we're continuing in that, um, pattern, there's no significant, uh, changes in program proposed in this budget. Really, this is a carry forward, uh, of next year. And if you split it up, um, a little differently, as we always do, you can see, um, what that eighty-one thousand dollars is supporting. Um, really, it's an increase in salaries, I'll talk in just a moment about the, the changes in, in staffing, there are some modest changes. Um, but you can see that it's really increases in salaries driving, um, an overall increase there, and a decrease in tuitions, um, for placements outside the district, so, all in all, it nets out to that seven tenths. Terms of significant changes, we are eliminating the position of a counselor on special assignment, that's a, that was the role of a counselor who was assigned to the high school, or, I'm sorry, assigned to the district office, and has been handling over the course of years, um, Medicaid, some of our emergency planning, some of our safety concerns, and so forth. Um, that work is being split up, um, amongst existing staff members, so we're able to reduce that position. Uh, during the course of this year, we added a half FTE in, in the nursing services, um, specifically around, um, the, um, and I have an error in this slide, but specifically around, um, particular student. And also in this budget, we're adding, again, around, uh, particular students, two-point-oh paraprofessionals, so that's what that second sort of cryptic line really means, it's, it's two pieces rolled together, a half FTE in nursing and two, uh, paraprofessionals. There's shifting throughout the budget, you have much more detailed information, uh, available to you in your packet, along with lots of backup, so you can see some of this. Uh, but it's not really significant to the overall, uh, piece of the budget. There's no change in permanent, uh, staffing for mental health or for counseling, although there is one proposed change, um, that's not yet in the budget. So, we're currently working through, um, a, a proposal around the addition of two, um, not permanent additions, uh, to our staff, but two, uh, school psychologist interns, so these would be, um, students who can do, um, all of the work of a school psychologist, but they're required to have this experience. Um, so we would offer the, uh, two positions, if they receive a stipend, but they don't get benefits, they're not permanent employees. Um, and they would be able to support student testing requirements, group counseling, mental health, um, and so on. Really, the idea there, uh, is to free up our school psychologists to do some of the work that they do so well. Um, so those are the, uh, significant, um, changes in terms of staffing, our neck, and, and in that program. Our next budget, uh, coming up on February ninth is capital, um, and then we have a number of other presentations, the board is scheduled. Um, a board work session on March fifth, we'll have a conversation on education, has been, uh, scheduled for the tenth, the topic of that's, uh, yet to be determined. We work through March with Bosie's presentations, um, a budget review of the entire budget on April fifth, approve and adopt on April nineteenth, um, a public hearing, the last formal presentation of the board on the third, and we'll vote on the nineteenth. So, that, or, I'm sorry, the seventeenth, that vote is, um, at the high school from six to nine. So, you have a, a, you know, you have backup documentation, you have a, a board packet with all the line item detail and so on. Um, this was a brief overview, are there any other questions that I could answer with regard to that?
Uh, Dr. Putnam has a clarification.
Just, if you could flip back to the slide around the, um, elimination of the, uh, counselor on special assignment.
Yes.
I just, um, this is, uh, due, and I think you mentioned it when you talked about it, but just to hit it again, it's due to a retirement.
Correct. Yes, and I did, I didn't say that, but it is due to a retirement, so.
That's it, so, cause I heard, I, I'm pretty attuned, so when I hear board members start to talk, I, I wanna make sure we clarify.
Carol?
Yes.
Wasn't talking before. Um, speaking of that position, the table we have in our packet does not show, um...
Yes, it does, I think if, um, or it should.
I'm on page five, I'm looking at that table of salaries of certified staff. Maybe I missed it, uh, just, if you could just point me out where.
Oh, yeah, those are the building counselors, um, that particular, that particular staff member, uh, is included.
Um, it's on page one.
Yeah, if you look on page one, um...
Under, under Staff Development, uh, TOSA.
Right, so it moves from a total of seventy-two to seventy-one, um, that's where that position's included. So, that is, um...
Yeah, and the first page of the, of the Program One.
So, if you look at, oh, I'm sorry, it's, I said pa- it's page three.
Page three.
So, the top of page three, under, um, under District Wide, you see it's from six, we have, we budgeted six, we're at six for this year, and it moves to five.
Okay.
Um, that's reflected, uh, elsewhere in the document, as that moved from seventy-two to seventy-one, so that's that reduction.
Okay, thank you, I'm, you know, I definitely missed that one, so the two positions that are in process that you mentioned.
Yes, they're not reflected here.
They're not.
They're not in the documents yet, uh, they're only in the PowerPoint, um, because that came up as we were working through it at the tail end of this. We'd had some conversation about it, but I hadn't included it, so we'll need to come back and, and catch that up, and we will be doing that.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask a sensitive question.
Sure.
Uh, you know, in my defense, the mental health team know how much I, I'm always, I hate to see any cuts in there or anything like that. But when we're introducing two new positions, um, you know, e- even if they're, um, still in process, we're still thinking about them. We've always heard, we have the highest ratio of mental health professionals in the district, you know, among all the districts in Monroe County. I think they do a fabulous job, I don't wanna see one single position cut in, in that whole team, I wanna be very clear about that. So, you know, and now we're justifying two more positions, so can you explain a little bit the rationale?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, cause I think, uh, one of the pieces is that they're, they're not full-time positions, it is a, a psychologist intern. Um, similar to a student teacher, or a counselor, um, uh, sort of someone doing their intern counseling internship. These are a little different because they're certified psychologists, but they wanna now work in the school system, so they have to come through the school. It's set up through HR and the local colleges that have these programs. So, I'm, I'm comfortable saying that the stipend for this, which is really paid through the college, this is not, um, cause some questions might come up on, why don't we pay student teachers? This is a different, um, organization that's run through the colleges, and the stipend is approximately fifteen thousand dollars per psych- psychol- um, psychologist intern. So, I think that helps, there's no benefits tied to it, it's really, it's, it's a win-win. We get someone that can come in and really do a lot of the nitty-gritty, the testing, to free up our school psychologists, to do a lot of the great work that Penfield psych- school psychologists are able to do, working with students, working with teams, working with the TIG process, the Trauma Illness and Grief. Um, whereas in some school districts, the school psychologist truly is in a room, testing non-stop, just to meet the needs of the CSE process. Uh, here, we do a lot of, uh, preliminary testing for ISTs, for RTI. Our school psychologists really do go above and beyond what, uh, a typical school psychologist does. So, here's an opportunity that was brought to us, to really take a look at something we haven't done before, uh, utilizing a potential of a, a psychologist intern, which would cost the district approximately fifteen thousand dollars each, one time, for one year, as we review, they wouldn't be an, an add-on, they wouldn't be salaried, they wouldn't be, um, uh, collecting benefits through us. And, um, we see it as, as a win-win, so I would say that it's not adding to full-time positions.
Okay.
Um, while we do have, uh, a, a low ratio in regards to students to mental health, um, I think a lot of the things that we've dealt with, uh, showcase why we need, that I agree with you, that our mental health staff is strong and does great work in the district. So, that's my long answer, I hope that explains it, that it's not a full-time position, it's an intern one year, and that cost is really, you can't beat it. Again, the hope is that they're working on, um, testing, uh, while we can have our school psychologists utilized for testing, but also for some of the other great things that they do.
Okay, and they would be floating, not assigned to one building?
They would be assigned, so that's really why it's not in the Program One budget right now, is that we're still having those conversations on what that's gonna look like. But our intention, moving forward now, as we build this, is that they really are working on a district office, they're not assigned to a building, they're used throughout the district based on the needs that we have. So, if one building has a, a number of, a, a, a large number of testing and things are happening, we can deploy the psychologist intern to that area to help and support, and that work would go through Scott Dreschler, um, our Director of Special Education.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, uh, yes, Lisa?
I have a question, um, I'm curious, do we, are these labels, um, like have to be what they say, or can we change them? Cause I always find it like misleading, for example, when we say, "Programs for students with disabilities," or we show like the certified salaries, and when I just like do my quick numbers, like sixty-five percent of that supports our ITR program, which is mainly not our classified students?
Well, that's true.
So, I think sometimes for general public, it sometimes looks like our, our numbers are skewed differently, I guess.
Right, I, you know, that's a fair point, um, you know, I think that, um, you know, that comes up in a number of different ways in our, in the reporting, in the, in the community, in some of the state reporting and so on, where, uh, just because of the way those folks are classified, um, not just by us, but, but by their certification and so on, that they, uh, end up showing that way. We can, uh, do a better job of trying to call that out and, and, uh, change those labels. We'd have to think about it a little bit, but I, 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 I do agree with, and I understand your point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And the, the interns are graduate students?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
Okay, Mark?
So, there, uh, with no other questions, I just wanted to give the board a brief tax cap update, because this has, um, we've gotten more information since the last time we had a conversation about this. Uh, the last time you saw this particular slide, the, the numbers that are in red, uh, were question marks. And now we know that the, uh, rate of inflation for this year, for last year, um, uh, so for the year just ended, the year that we use to project forward was, um, almost zero, was one-tenth, point one-two, uh, so twelve one-hundredths of one percent. Um, that then becomes the allowable levy growth, so this is the two percent tax cap. Um, the way that law is written is two percent, or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. And so you can see that, um, for example, at the bottom of the slide in twelve thirteen, when the rate of inflation was three-point-two percent, our calculations use two, two-point-one, we use two, one-point-four-six, we use one-point-four-six. And then the most dramatic, this will be the most dramatic example of that since the passage of the, of the, uh, tax levy limit legislation, um, virtually zero in terms of the levy growth. The other component of that calculation we've already talked about is the tax-based growth factor. This is the growth in the, uh, real brick and mortar in a community, so not reassessments, but the, but new, new homes, new businesses, new construction. Um, and we grew at the rate of one-point-one-two percent, uh, last year, so that's the factor we'll use for sixteen-seventeen. This is a quick summary of that calculation, so, um, while I won't go through it, you can kind of see, uh, a bit of its complexity. There's, um, last year's levy, uh, increased by the growth factor, we adjust for pilots, uh, payments in lieu of tax property. Um, we include a, the raise for the, uh, allowable levy, and in our case, in our case for this year, while many school districts are going to be at or near zero, um, we have a couple of, of unique features going on. We have the one-point-one-two percent growth in the tax base, that's new for us, certainly. Um, and if you'll recall, the, the graph of the county districts, that's the highest in the county save Russian Rieta, um, for this, for this year. So, that's very unique, um, but certainly comes at a, at a precipitous time for us. So, um, also there's a slight decrease, uh, in the amount of pilots, so that, that adds a little bit, uh, to the allowable levy. And, um, we carried over into this year's budget, uh, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of unused cap space from last year. So, um, you work all that out, we're at a, at this point, at a tax levy limit for this budget of one-point-five percent, about one and a half percent, or nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, there's a few things left, so that's not as bad as it could be, I guess would be the best way to say that. Um, certainly it will be challenging as we move through this, um, but many districts are gonna be struggling with much less. So, um, there's, it's not final yet, it has to be final by the end of February when we file our paperwork. Um, but we have left, we need to confirm those pilot agreements, that depends on an estimate for budget. Um, and, uh, part of this has to do with capital exclusions, buses bought, construction probably, there's a lot of sort of behind-the-scenes work that goes into that calculation, that needs to be, uh, redone and reconfirmed. But, uh, unless something changes, it's that one and a half percent, uh, that I expect to see going forward. Does, are there any questions about that, is there any? Thank you. Um, I should point out, though, that we currently have a, uh, that'll add to, that'll be a ninth year, um, if we stay within the cap, as we intend to do for this year, that'll be a ninth year, um, of, uh, under-two percent average increase on the levy. Also wanted to bring the board up to date on, on some, uh, developments in the community, specifically around Shadow Pines. Dr. Putnam and I talked about this, that we have some news we wanna share, but I also just wanted to take a moment to sort of remind the board and the community of where we've, that, and I guess just say out loud, that we're aware of this. Uh, I've been, it's been pretty amazing how many folks have come up to me over the course of the last several weeks to tell me, "Did you know?" Um, "Did you know what's going on?" And, and I think we all appreciate that, I, we, we live in a community, we're part of a community, and it's nice that people wanna share, uh, but in fact, we know, and I just wanted to let, let the community know that, that the board has been paying attention to this, and that we've been trying to, uh, to keep up as best we can in, in a development that's, that's changing pretty quickly. Um, so, and really this revolves around that, the, our, uh, Board Facilities Advisory Committee. It's been meeting since June of fourteen, long before any of this was, um, conceived of in terms of the development. Um, but we know there's work that needs to be done, and it's part of their responsibilities, because they have to do with construction and maintenance of the building. They've been tracking, we've been tracking and reporting and talking about some of these, uh, new developments. And new developments, I guess I mean in terms of, they've just come, things that have come up, and also new developments in, they are developments, they are developments of, uh, new housing tracks in the community. So, uh, in September, uh, just in terms of public board meetings, we, um, had a Windsor Ridge update. Uh, we talked about that again in October, as we learned more. In November, we talked about our building condition survey, uh, and some planning considerations around that development. And we also, for the first time, then talked about Shadow Pines, um, and, and what some of the potential impacts of that might be. And we included to our community, um, in our newsletter in January, some notice, and we talked about that, that, uh, we were aware that, uh, both Windsor Ridge and Shadow Pines were on the horizon. We talked about our building condition pros- survey process, um, and a little bit about our planning. So, we're aware, um, and we're tracking it, and, and we will certainly continue to do that. I just wanted to include the slides to remind everybody of, of what, uh, exactly it is that we're talking about. So, here is Windsor Ridge, uh, those forty-three acres and eighty-six homes, fairly far along in the process at the corner of Atlantic and Five Mile Line. Um, the, of course, this is Shadow Pines, the golf course, uh, that's been so in the news recently, three hundred and thirteen... Pines, the golf course that's been so in the news recently, three hundred and thirteen acres and currently zoned for half-acre residential lots. We've had, as we've talked about that and as we've talked about the over a hundred million dollars of potential new, potential repairs, replacements, wants, needs, asks that were talked about in that building condition survey, the, the Facilities Advisory Committee had, came to certain key planning considerations, that we need to address the known near-term concerns. We have, and, which means that we have things we know we need to do, and we want to keep going with that process. That any plan that we develop for the longer term has to have sufficient flexibility, because the certain, the future is really uncertain right now. And that we want to maintain our instructional program and budget and tax rate stability are, are core concerns, they're important to our community and to our school. So with that, we've developed a five-year plan. We're working towards our small capital project, we talked, we've talked a number of times about that, and that's continuing on right now. So with this May vote, we'll have a small project for asbestos abatement, ropes course repair, baseball field at Bay Trail, and renovation to the playgrounds. We'll also ask the public to authorize a capital reserve. That's going to help set us up to deal with what may come in the future. Tentatively, we had planned an elementary playground addition, and then looking towards some future capital project that will be some combination of addition, repair, renovation. We're going to develop that as we pay attention to what that future brings. And that future's a, we know a little more, and in some ways, it's a little less certain. So as you know, there was more pub, you know, we were doing our part around public release, but it sort of caught fire in the last several weeks. An article in the Democrat and Chronicle, several news, several pieces on TV and so on. And so as a result of that conversation, the board will be at, on February third, having a town, at their February third legislative meeting, will be moving to schedule a public hearing. So the idea is that the town would like to consider a moratorium on development on the, on particularly on the Shadow Pines parcel. To do that, they need a local law, and to do, and to have a local law of that moratorium, they need to schedule a public hearing. So their next meeting, their next board meeting on February third, they'll schedule that meeting. Once that's scheduled and public notice has been made, they'll have the hearing, they'll, they will, they will consider what they, what they learn, and they will take action in some way on the moratorium. They intend to use that time, they're talking about a six to twelve-month moratorium, and they intend to use that time to establish a committee to study the impacts, uses, what it means to the community, what potential changes it could bring in terms of all of the impacts. And, and those of you who may have heard the town supervisor on the news, you know, all, everything from sewer impacts to Fire District, to water runoff, to quality of life, to traffic, all those things will be considered. And certainly, the school system's going to be impacted. We know, Mr., has the supervisors reached out to Dr. Putnam to talk about our being on that committee, to help provide our perspective? So at the end of that study period, there'll be a report to the town board and we'll, and they'll move forward. So, you know, we're happy to be in partnership. The town's been great in communication with us already as we've moved through this. They've really done their level best to kind of keep us in the loop as they move forward, and we're happy to participate in, in however this, this moves forward, because it is, you know, it is a significant impact to us. So did you have something you wanted to add? Okay.
Great job.
Any other questions?
Question?
Yes.
I don't know if anybody can answer this, but I'm just not up to snuff on town. Like, you might know this. So it says way back a couple of slides that, so Shadow Pines right now is zoned for half-acre residential lots. Does the town have the authority to change that? Like, how does that work?
I have realized how little I truly know about zoning law as a result of this. And at least for me, it's fair for me to say I know nothing at all.
I don't know either, I didn't know if.
Generally, it goes back to their master plan that they developed.
Okay.
And, and that, to change it is a, a long process. And
I was just curious.
Looking back, at, at some point, the golf course was zoned for recreational, and then in the last master plan somewhere over ten years ago, it was also included as a, our one or whatever that is. So there was some change in that, apparently. Go ahead, Barb.
Well, being the senior resident here, where Shadow Pines is, that was, the Clark House was a residence. And so I am assuming that nineteen twenty-nine residence parcel, and all of that land came with that. The back nine is the part of dolomite land, but where the Clark House is and the front nine, that is residential. So I am not sure if even the dolomite piece that is the back nine would be under that nineteen twenty-nine. Just giving you a little history.
Yeah, all I can say is my, I'm just repeating my understanding of the current status, is that it's owned, that all fit, the whole parcel, that whole property's owned residential for half-acre lots with hundred-foot, sort of the traditional half-acre lot with a hundred foot of frontage.
Mark?
And actually, that kind of jives with some, one of my questions, is I've heard different numbers for the number of acreage. You've, and we've always heard three thirteen or so, which gives you a certain potential of number of houses at a half-acre lot. A lot of what I've read in, in the, in the news has been around two hundred acres, which maybe it's divided up by the front nine, half-nine. So we're hearing different numbers in terms of how much, which entices into how many houses could go in there.
And I, and I think there's, and I've heard a million rumors. And, you know, I, I, this is not our, you know, this is the town's business. We're happy to be invited, we're, and we want to have those answers too, I think. I think there's been some conversation around how much of it's developable, how many acres they intend to use once they have setbacks and green space and so on. So, you know, I, I, and I think everybody, you know, I, no one had, that I have spoken to yet did not have an opinion on this. So, and, and very often in a case like this, people are happy to make up their own facts too. So I, you know, like I say, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm looking forward to learning more about it. We're concerned, we're planning around it. I mean, we're, we're including this as a consideration in our planning. I think that's important for us. It's very important for us, but we're just going to need to learn a lot more as we go along.
I think one of the pieces you mentioned, Mark, I think is just really important for the board, but also for anybody watching, is, is that idea of the, the rumors and the stories. You know, Mark's in, in connection with the town, with sort of his, his equal. I'm in the conversation with Tony LaFountain on a regular basis now, will be part of the committee that looks. But I will just be honest, living in the community too, I have been told what's happening by multiple people that's completely different from each other. So, so there are a lot of rumors out there, there's a lot of hearsay, there are people who you'll hear will say they absolutely know because they know a top-secret individual who told them something. And what we're tending to find is the story's changing a lot, and really, the answer is the town's working on it. We're trying to work in conjunction with the town. But again, don't believe everything you hear, because I've heard lots of, lots of things about sizes of houses and keeping half of the golf course, and I'm sure you all know three or four more rumors than I know too. So again, it's that trying to stay calm, knowing that we are working on it, we're looking at it, the facilities plan, the committee is, is working on it and continuing to listen, and realize that if, if zoning happens and houses come, then we're going to have to address that. And I'll always say it's a good problem for a school district to have, because the opposite is people are all moving out. And instead, people want to move to Penfield, houses aren't staying on the market long, the turnover is going well because people want to live in Penfield. And part of the reason any of us moved to Penfield and people want to be here is because of the school system. And so it's, it's, it is a good problem to have, but one that we'll be working on for a while.
Yeah. And just kind of in conclusion, I've asked Dr. Putnam to ask the town that, you know, a member of the Board of Education and staff be on any committee they put together so we can have some representation. Mark, also, you've reported a while ago in regard to Gentles Farm Market on the other end of Penfield, and I noticed before Christmas they had a mass auction of equipment and move out of the house. And is there, is there any update on that?
Yeah, that, to my knowledge, that, we, we had had some conversation about a developer who was interested in, in building townhomes on that property. That's at this point not moving forward. So they worked through it and, and essentially, and they were unable to get the density that they needed to make that project work. So that's not necessarily forever, you know how this works, but at least for now, that's off the table.
Okay, so that's a wait and see?
Correct.
It, it won't be a market again, obviously, because they got rid of everything. So, okay, thank you very much.
All right. So just an update on the Communication Committee. We presented a couple of times this school year and last school year around the Communication, Communication Committee. One of the outcomes of that was our Facebook page, our district Facebook page, and our district Twitter page. The other piece that came along with that is an update to our website. And so some things you'll notice, and it's been live since right around the last couple of weeks, right? It was over Martha Luther King Junior's Day on that Monday, as they were working, as was Nancy Bradstreet. And some things you'll notice is each school now has its own homepage that mirrors the district homepage in terms of layout. Each school now has its own set of quick links on the left side of the school homepage. I have a visual to point that out in a minute. The contact button, social media button, search box, and home button are all located at the upper-left side of the page, just above the menu bar. You'll notice our live district Twitter feed is on the homepage with lots of great photos and information. And staff links to the Internet, WinCap, Infinite Campus are all located in the footer of the page, and these are accessible both on the district homepage and on each school homepage. And this was a lot of work. It was a two-year committee that really worked on this. This is sort of the front look you can see. Just go visit penfield.edu to see the change. It is very different. The search bar up on top was, got into a lot of, a lot of people have concerns on how to search the website because it was sort of hidden in the old website. Now it's front and center on the top. As small as it is, the, the, the photos change. It used to be you, you'd have to refresh to see the photos, and those photos are on a constant sort of PowerPoint change to, to show, showcase all the great students in our district. And then sort of the look here, that left-hand side is quick links, and those are always on the district page. In the old website format, the quick links were the same for any school that, when you opened up. And now, the high school can have different quick links than Bay Trail and Cobble's and Harris Hill, which makes a lot of sense. That's where parents and students and staff typically go for the really most important information that can change. The high school page, when they do scheduling, one of the very first top quick links will be the student schedule, so the student, course description guide that they can go and look at. So trying to make it easier to move through. The right-hand side with the live Twitter feed, which is great, schools that have their own school Twitter feed, or Twitter page, when they, when you go to their page, that's what you'll see. So when you go to the, when you go to Harris Hill or Indian Landing right now and go to their page, it's actually their Twitter feed, not just the district's Twitter feed that comes out, which is really cool. And then the only piece is for all those people out there who love watching the Board of Education meetings, because we're no longer on public access television, as we work with the town to figure that out. We talked about that last week. But if you click that, right in the middle, that little tab that says videos, it actually freed up a lot of real estate. What happened before was just the, the video would just sit there and take up a lot of room on the homepage, and now you just have to click videos, and you'll see all the videos, all the old Board of Education meetings and anything else that we put up. And the upcoming events, if you click there, has a calendar that you can, to look at. So again, just huge thank you to the Communications Committee and all the work they did. Thank you to the Student Council at the high school, they provided a lot of great feedback. We did a survey and got some more feedback. And again, thank you to Nancy Bradstreet, who is sort of, if you've ever seen The Wizard of Oz, she's, she's sort of the lady behind the curtain. So here's the webpage and all the great things that go up, and everything on Facebook and every, everybody on Twitter, all the stuff that's happening. Sort of Nancy's behind the curtain making it all happy, happen. And I know she's in the audience, so thank you very much, Nancy, for all the work you've done. It's always good, other questions? Webpage questions?
Questions, board members? Everybody's had a chance to see it, it looks great, so.
And you always follow up webpages with the annual fire inspection, so I'll turn that back to Dr. Sansucci.
Because it doesn't get any more exciting than this. But, so this is really just a brief update. This has been, it's been done. This, fire inspections in schools are done on an every eleven-month schedule, and the reason that they're done that way is so that the fire inspector gets to see the buildings at a different time. It's, you know, other, if it weren't for that, and your time was July, they'd never see the building with kids in it, and so on. So that works well, but it means they come around faster than you think they should. They've, they've, they've come, they've inspected, all the reports are on file and have been filed with the State Education Department. Any violations that were noted have been corrected. We are required to file, to publish rather, a public notice that. We've done so. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer. Yes?
I'm, I'm noticing in our agenda that it says the safety report was published on March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen?
I think that's old language, because it would be January nineteenth, so I apologize for that.
I think it's January nine, what's on the slide is January nineteen.
The slide's correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay.
It's all for superintendent reports.
Okay, we are on page four, item five, Board Business. And as Dr. Sansucci just mentioned, and we want to reiterate officially during the meeting here, during November and December two thousand and fifteen, this fire inspection annually, as mandated by the State Education Department, took place in all the buildings of our district. Ms. Dawn Howe, Fire Inspector, Tennessee Valley Educational Partnership, Health, Safety, and Risk Management Office, conducted the inspections. All buildings were inspected and reports are on file. Some minor violations were noted, artwork and computers blocking rescue windows, equipment stored in front of exit doors, also the need to remove several permanent doorstops holding doors open. All these violations have been corrected, and the buildings are in conformance. And as required by Section eight oh seven A of the education law, public notice of the filing of the fire safety report was published in the January nineteenth edition, two thousand and sixteen, of our official newspaper, The Daily Record. We also, item two, had an award of construction contracts for the combined project. As everyone knows, the district has previously received State Education Department approval for our projects, included the gym, the security project, the capital project, including roof replacements. And these projects were designed, approved, and submitted separately for SED approval. However, because of the long SED approval timelines and delays in approval, the district has determined it would be advantageous to consolidate the work into a single project for bidding. This will benefit the district by minimizing coordination issues between contractors and should maximize our ability to keep on schedule. On Tuesday, January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, at three thirty PM, bids for this project were opened and publicly read. And the five contracts necessary for this project are general trades, roofing, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. The district enjoyed significant competition, and bids were received from twenty-nine different contractors. In addition to the base bid amount, bids were solicited for twelve alternates. The submitted bids for both base bids and alternatives are detailed on the attached spreadsheet and in your packets. The construction manager has also reviewed the bid submittals and the low bidders and recommends award. Award is also recommended for all alternates. In addition to being recommended contract awards, costs will be incurred for construction fees, professional services, change orders, and other related costs. It is expected that the total project cost of all the recommended awards will be within the budgeted amount. And you have more information on your packet, and you have the construction manager's room recommendation of the bidders. So with that in mind, I'd like a motion and a second that the construction contracts be awarded as set for like a motion and a second that the construction contracts be awarded as set forth above.
And if I could also, I, we have in our audience.
Oh, yes.
If you'll take the motion, that's fine. But I had invited Mr. Huffman of Campus Construction, just so that you could be updated on the, on where we're at with this, some additional information about the bid and some information on the proposed schedule.
Sure.
So I don't know how.
No, come on up, Gary. And sorry we missed you, but feel free to give us any comments or any questions anyone may have.
Good evening. Thank you. As you mentioned, on January 12th, we did take bids for the five contracts, which you're going to be asked this evening to approve. It was an extremely good outcome, very good. We have very good contractors. And we're going to do a project kickoff this Friday, subject to your approval tonight. And then we anticipate to start the security portion of this project February 8th. So just in a couple of weeks we'll start. And that'll be after hours work by the electricians. Priority is here to start at this building first for that piece of the project. The work will continue steady through. One of the other components is a small addition outside the gym, outside the high school gym. That'll be done, or started this spring. And then this summer, we'll be doing the renovations to the east gym, which is also including the removal of the infamous floor system there. So we will be wrapping up the project here in the fall. And we've been in communication with the athletics department, so they're on board with our schedule as well.
Okay, any questions for Gary? And for our public, you know, this is, when we mention the long State Education Department approval process, it's been very long. And we've been looking forward to getting this accomplished for a long time. So glad we're finally there and glad we have such a great outpouring of contractors. It's always a healthy sign too, I think.
It is, yes.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming, Gary. And we appreciate your spending time with us and explaining a lot of that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks. So if we could have a motion and a second that the construction contracts be awarded as follows. I think all those in favor? Thank you. We also have, from previous work, change orders in the athletic field lighting. And as, as normal, you have change orders as you wind down a project. And we have five orders totaling less than $9,000 that were requested, both by the contractor and the district. And the above changes have been reviewed and are supported by our architect Vic Tommocelli, obviously, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and assistant superintendent for business Mark Sansoucy. If we could have a motion and a second that the change orders, as described in your packet, be approved.
So moved.
And if we can get a second, we can have a question?
Second.
Second? Okay, yes, question.
Number two said safety concerns. Is that, I'm not sure what that meant.
Gary, can you speak to it? It's, this is the, if you don't mind, this is the labor materials and equipment necessary to install a timing relay for the emergency lights. It's Blackman Farrell for the lights project.
Sorry, catch me up, Gary.
Sorry, no, I.
It's all right.
I've never seen that in here before where it said safety concerns. I didn't know if it was like student safety.
It was to give us.
Student safety or contracts. I just was curious.
That was for the district's benefit. It's, we mentioned it as a safety concern only is because this, what this does is it gives you, gives you control of the emergency lights themselves. It wasn't in the original concept of the design. So this gives Alan's crew better flexibility over operating the emergency light system, integrating it and with the generator, that you have a standby generator. So to incorporate into that as well, so that those emergency lights are linked to the generator and can, and run when that's operating.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? That makes great sense too. Thanks for explaining that. That's a great question too. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Policy review. Whose turn is it to cover that?
No, go.
The only thing really that we have on tonight's agenda for policy that's new is that we're deleting the very last policy in our current manual. It's only one sentence, the Penfield, "The district shall participate in the BOSI's operated cooperative summer high school." In no way does that mean that the district is not going to participate in, in the BOSI's summer school programs. We will continue to do that, but this is not the, it's not a policy that really provides much direction nor, and it does limit the district's flexibility a little bit. So we talked about this. No other district has a policy like this. So we're just deleting that policy. And actually, I, maybe the other policies that are up for a third and second read did have some language change. So maybe I shouldn't have glossed over those, based on some feedback we received from fellow board members, I think mostly. And those changes were highlighted in, in the policies you received. Of course, one of the policies I think is brand new, so it's a change, but the whole policy is new. And that's the one on weapons in the school and the gun free schools act, which is a policy that every district in New York State is required to have. So we're just complying with the law that we need to have a policy about that. So I didn't know if you have any more questions on the, the small changes we did make to the other policies up for read tonight.
Any questions, board members? You all had a chance to see it and review it.
Well, thanks all of you for your input, because we do have this small committee, but we really like that other people look at the policies too. It's really helpful to us because sometimes we're a little close to it and we miss some pretty obvious things. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great job. Oh, and I think since we're at third reading, we do need a motion.
Yeah.
And a second on those. If I could have that. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, President's Comment. Let me do the official part first. The terms of the Board of Education members, Mrs. Barbara Babyars and Mr. John Piper will expire June 30th, 2016. The term of office for a board member is three years. Petitions may be obtained at the district office after March 1st, 2016. Twenty-nine signatures of qualified voters are needed on the petition, which must be filed with the clerk no later than April 18th, 2016. Candidates should supply their personal biographical data and statement of qualifications and issues to the district clerk by April 11th, 2016 to meet the printing deadline for the budget newsletter. In addition, the Monroe County School Boards Association annually has a prospective school board candidate seminar that has been scheduled for Saturday, April 2nd, 2016 at the Holiday Inn Airport. And we will also determine when we will have a meet the candidate night in the very near future. So I wanted to put that out there. Other items on the President's Report, I think we've noted previously, we have a lot of legislative activity, a legislative breakfast for the Monroe County School Boards Association in February. We have a trip to Albany with that group in February. If you read the newspaper, the governor's been on tour with a lot of ideas. And it's up to the legislature to sort out these ideas and discuss these and hopefully find a way to pay for a lot of the ideas. So, because we're very involved in that, because our main concern is how does it impact us in regard to several regulatory issues that we tend to be overburdened with. So we're looking forward to that. February and March are very important for all of us. And we do believe the budget will be done on time by April 1st again. There is a push for that. So a lot of work and a condensed amount of time by a lot of people, including your school board and your staff. So we just like to make everybody aware of those activities. Okay, any, in unfinished business, I wanted to mention, we do have our strategic plan in front of us. And if you wanted to take a minute to look at that, this is the board's strategic plan for 2015, 2016. And we are entering the end period of our first phase of our strategic plan, which was September through January. And as of February 1st, we will enter the second phase, of which we have covered a lot of items. But we have various priorities in the plan. We have actually four priorities and, and some committees that are involved in that. We have some progress updates. Does anyone have anything they want to add officially as a progress update on the plan as we move forward and as we look at the goals for February through June? Any committee updates beyond what we have in our packet? Okay. One of the things too, that we'll be working on, I know in the second stage is, you know, trying to review and improve our new Board of Education member orientation. And I know we've all been through that and we've all had a various, different degree of orientation. And we're trying to look at possibly beginning a method to have a standardized orientation that we'll begin working on and, you know, look for some guidance from other places in regard to that. See what other districts do. See what the New York State School Boards Association suggests in regard to that. And, and the other issue is too, we're going to try to continue to look at recognizing employees' achievement and develop a system for that recognition. I think that was important about the Team Penfield concept in that regard. So those are two of the bigger items. And we have a very live Facebook out there on behalf of the board and, you know, among many other organizations that have Facebook. But Carol and her committee have done a diligent effort trying to get a lot of pictures out there. And we continue to talk that up in that regard. So, any other comments on the plan or any other tasks or objectives at this point? Carol?
I am worried about the Facebook page, because it's pretty stagnant. We've tried and it's hard. It's really hard to go back home with everything and then remember that, oh, we need to post about this and this meeting. And so I guess I'm worried because we started off really well, but there really has been no update since December. And I'm a person who does not like to see a page that is stagnant. For me personally, this is a page that I don't visit again. So I know we talked about it, you know, and tried to see how we can use it. But I don't know where we're going from there. And I know I posed that question by email, you know, to you guys. So I would love to hear from you.
Well, I think too, one of the things that I know Barb and Camille have put some information out there, and I know you want to comment. I, I look at this as primarily going as a committee meeting again and trying to see, you know, how you can meet your objectives and goals and then coming back to us, you know, with some recommendations. But go ahead, Barb.
I was just going to say that for my part, there was a glitch. It happened. I've now seen that there's a way to correct it. But I did post something. It did not show up on the page. I don't quite know why, but now I know that there was a glitch. So I just wanted to say that there, you know, there's been an attempt to do things. I think, just to clarify that there was some glitchy things and it showed up, but not on the page that it needed to show up.
Well, and I think, go ahead, Camille. You're on the committee.
I just want to say that I think that, so the most recent post was December 19th. There hasn't been a lot of board activity. We haven't done, you know, over the holidays. I think that's not atypical. But one of the ideas we had is that after each meeting, we could post a short summary of some, some highlights. I would love for, so I was, I'm making notes and I'll do that. It would be much shorter than what Nancy writes up in terms of meeting summary. But, and if I can figure out the technology, I'd love to put a link to the movie trailer. You know, maybe that would generate some interest. But I wouldn't want to steal any thunder from the district's website. But, so we had that idea that each, we could rotate the responsibility, because we had the idea, but then we didn't say whose job it is to do that. So I, I think we'd need to go back to the drawing board a little. But I, I think we all agree a stagnant page is not what we want. But we, we started, we had some posts, and I, I think things will pick up, I really do, with our responsibilities to be, to our legislators and talking to them. I think there'll be a lot that we can share. But we'll keep, we have, we need to keep updating it, because, because you're right.
I'm happy to take a picture of Lisa, Mark and Catherine with their school board U certificates today.
Bingo. There you go.
And, and I know you'll get together as a committee, but also, I think everyone understands, we're volunteers. And we're making an extraordinary effort to try and do the best among many, many other things. But I was talking to another board president last week and, you know, I said, well, we have, the board has its own strategic plan. And she looked at me like I was crazy. And so, you know, we're, we're going above and beyond what most boards of education do, because we want to. So I don't think anybody's, you know, expects everything to be perfect. But I'm glad you, you guys are going to meet and you've discussed some of that. So thank you. Does anybody have any new business to bring forward? Okay, I would look for a motion to adjourn at 8:30 PM. All those in favor? Adjourned. Thank you.